We'll call the July eighth City Council Budget Workshop to order. Mr. Smith, if you give us the prayer and the pledge, please, sir.
Our Father, once again, we come before your presence to say thank you for this opportunity to be servants of this city. We ask for, Heavenly Father, you would lead and guide us now through this budget process that we'd be good stewards of all that you have given us charge of. We thank you now in that sign in Jesus's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Blanche, come on down.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. The first item, how you doing on our agenda? Item number one is an overview of the Administrative Legal Services, City Clerk, Human Resources, Community Development, and Economic Development Budget. So this should be in your books as well as on your tablets. The City Administration Budget consists of the Mayor's Budget, the City Administrator, and Special Assessments. The table below gives you an overview of that budget with the increase of about 1.10% overall for Special Assessments. The Mayor's Budget, 8.51%, and the City Administrator's Budget, 2.97%. The 8.51% for the Mayor's Budget is primarily due to the transfer of funds for the Apopka Youth Works Program from the finance budget to the Mayor's Budget in the amount of $42,200. There's a slight increase also in office supplies, operating supplies, membership fees, and other various for various organizations. The Administrative Services Budget increased about 2.97%, which is primarily related to travel and training for our new City Administrator in the amount of $5,300. The City's Special Assessment Budget increases are related to the increases in streetlight fees, repairs, and maintenance for various properties. In regards to Legal Services, the City Clerk and the Human Resource Budgets, we do have some slight increases and decreases. City Legal Services Budget increased 44.71%. This is due to we're now adding funds to cover legal fees, and this is over and above the amount for the salaries and wages for in-house city attorney. So we're adding an additional $336,000 for that. Labor attorney for $60,000, collective bargaining $10,000, and a position recruiter for $25,000. The City Clerk's Office Budget increased about 24.87% due to just new staff transferring into that department. Some of the old staff has left the city. Human Resource Budget went down 74.07%. This is due to we did include the contingency last year in the amount of 2.7% for the salary study. So that's no longer in the HR budget. That was implemented in FY '24. Community and Economic Development Budget is your next chart. The Community Development Budget increased about 4.59%. Increases are primarily related to contractual services for scanning services, which is 5,000 attorney fees to review Platts Utility and Access Easements, which is 10,000, software support, the big one, which is Open Gov. Building Inspection's Budget reflects a slight increase of about 1.38%. The Economic Development Budget increased 30.76% due to increases in contractual services of 20,000, membership 17,000, and training 4,525. In regards to the Transportation Impact Fee Fund and the CRA Fund, there are slight increases in the Transportation Impact Fee Fund for various new projects over the next year. The CRA Budget currently reflects a decrease because it does not include any carryover projects at this time. Once those projects in the budget is approved by the CRA, we will incorporate the final budget in this city's budget. So that was just an overview for those departments and divisions. The staff is here. Directors are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions for Blanche or any of the department heads that have been recognized?
Yeah, and thank you for that. That was concise. Thank you. In reference to community development, I'm trying to go through the line by line here, so I just didn't have this earlier. What? Did we allocate any funds for Main Street Apopka? Main Street Apopka?
I don't think you did, right? No.
So not in community development or in economic development, either side of that?
No. They did not include, I think if you're gonna do anything, you'll make that decision in '24?
What do you mean?
If you're gonna contribute anything, are you gonna do it before September 30th?
I don't believe so. I thought the intention was to be on this budget for next year.
Come on up.
All right.
As far as the Main Street Apopka Budget, the request they've put in, it has not been approved yet. With the continued review with the service agreement that we are working on, I don't feel that we have come to a final number. I know there has been a request, but I don't know if we are gonna approve the full request or if it will go above or below that request. It was not included in the Economic Development Budget, was not included in Community Development. We weren't certain where those funds would be drawn down from, so we would need clarification on that.
Okay, but there is, I guess, the real, we're working on an agreement, so it's coming to fruition in some capacity. So I'd wanna make sure we're allocating some funds, because the point of budgeting is to make sure we're not having to do special budget amendments down the road. So I'd like to get this as clean as possible upfront, so in October, September, or whatever it may be. November, we're not saying we needed a budget amendment, so I would like to see that in there, and obviously with the approval of the rest of the Commission as well. But I feel that Main Street's gonna be a very powerful tool, not only for your department and for community development, us as commissioners in our city. So I think it'd be very valuable to at least budget something so that we can get ahead of it instead of making amendments down the road.
Absolutely. I think we would need to identify the appropriate budget for it to come out of. Where it's ultimately going to reside within the city, who's gonna be responsible for the oversight of that contract, who's gonna be collaborating with the entity. There's a lot still in discussion about that with Main Street as well as bringing it forth to the Council for a new presentation from Main Street and recommendations from staff. So there are still some points of clarification before we can incorporate it into either budget. I'm not certain where it belongs.
But you're the one reviewing their actual agreement, though, correct?
I am, and as of today, I'm not comfortable with continuing to be the one to review the agreement with the current responses I've received as the proposed scope of work is more in line with the CRA. I do not oversee the CRA. I cannot be responsible for the mutual goals that need to be established between the CRA and Main Street Apopka. There has been discussion that it cannot come out of the CRA budget, so we would need to know within the city where it's gonna come from. So yes, I am currently reviewing it. I have done the due diligence on it. I can present on it, but I do not feel it's my place because I do not oversee the CRA.
So is this possibly shifting into the CRA side of things?
I cannot say. This is as much information as I have as of this morning. I connected with Jacob just to let him know my position on it, that I am happy to bring anybody up to speed on what I found with this. But it's more in line with, it's clearly in line with the mission of the CRA. And some of the responsibilities are even duplicity of what the CRA is responsible for doing. So I think that the CRA Director or whoever's gonna assume that role needs to weigh in on this and give their input and establish that relationship. The funds will not come from the CRA, I can say that, but I don't know what that means. They come from community development or they come from economic development. Don't know where the CRA Director is gonna live.
Okay, understood. And I guess that leaves, and thank you for that. Where are we at with a CRA Director? I know there's been some small business owners locally here that have been asking about CRA funds, things like that. Where are we at with?
We're getting toward the end of the recruitment process.
Okay.
We're just waiting to hear from our recruiter. He's supposed to give us a packet. Is that right? Joe's here, I think. Yes.
Joe, why don't you come? Can I just add something if you don't mind?
Please, of course.
All right, what, my inquiry, you can come up.
I didn't know if the question was for me or not.
Earlier, I think I did send an email to the attention of Cliff and to Bobby Howell regarding the policy. Just the CRA policy, and I did receive it today. It was updated 2017, but in that policy, which is about 79 pages, it has the policy and standards of, you know, what the CRA is and what's expected from us as the CRA and how the revenues are kind of funded. But what's not in there is, is how do we pick or how do we vote or have an executive director? And how, what are the duties and responsibilities of the board? Because we do not sit as a strong mayor and commissioners. We sit as a civilian board for the CRA. And that is not in the policy. It is nowhere in the CRA that I received.
So what's the question to me or? Because I'm not involved in the CRA, so I don't think I can answer that question.
Certain CRAs, I know, like Eatonville has one that they have a CRA Director, Manager, I don't know what the title is, but the city, rather than do that, we've always housed it within the community development for a couple of reasons. One is it, we don't have a position that we have to spend CRA dollars to fund. So those dollars, 100% of the dollars that we get from that tax, the taxes from the county and the city, go toward programs or all the projects that we've got going on. So it's, and as we interview, I know we got, how many has he got? Three or four or five?
About four applicants that he screened. We had about 30 applications, and he cleared about three or four. I'm supposed to get a packet this week stipulating all the resumes and things of those selected, so for us to go through with our panel. I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't understand the question. So the CRA, like the mayor said, resided with the Community Development Director at that point, as far as I'm concerned, as I know. That's the way it has been, and I believe it is in that job description for the CRA.
Now, you're saying there is a job description for?
For the Community Development Director.
Is that anywhere where I can reference that?
Can, I'm sorry, say again?
Is there anywhere in our policy or anywhere that shows what his responsibility is over the CRA?
As far as I know, it's spelled out. There's only a line responsibility in his job description, his or her job description that stipulates CRA, be responsible for the CRA.
It's still not answering my question, which is what is his responsibility or her responsibility over the CRA?
It's not gonna clarify it in the job description. So it, job descriptions are not designed to, you know, be specific as far as drawing down on every specific duty that an individual has. So in the specific, now I don't have it in front of me, so I'm just going off of memory. So there is a stipulation or a line item in those job responsibilities for being in charge of the CRA.
That's in, I'm sorry, that's in the current CRA?
No, that's in the, I'm sorry, that's in the current job description for the Community Development Director position.
May I ask, who is currently holding that position?
That position is vacant right now.
It's vacant.
That's why we're going with the recruiter to try to find someone.
So in the meantime, who is, has anybody been assigned?
That I don't know.
Right now, we delegated those responsibilities as far as you can. We've delegated those responsibilities to Bobby at this point. Until we do have somebody to fill that role.
How soon are we going to get someone with the CRA?
Well, if I get the packet this week, we can hopefully, depending on what time this week I get the packet, hopefully we can set up interviews and have that cleared up by next week and do a recommendation the following week. So I would say within two or three weeks. Then, of course, we, you know, we have to do the offer and, you know, depending on timeframes for individuals starting, you know, they may have to give two-week notice or whatever.
So before Jane's hit departure, there were some approvals of some projects that, for the CRA district. So I guess the next question would be, are we, are we, is any of those projects starting? Or we're just gonna wait for the next CRA?
That'd be more for Radley. Most of the big projects are under Radley and AJ's.
Good evening. Yes, to answer your question, the projects have started. So the skate park pump track, the design has started on that CRA project. The downtown trails actually went out to bid on Sunday, so we're in the cone of silence for that, but that is phase one of the project. So once that comes back, we'll be coming back to hopefully award a contractor on that. So those larger projects are moving, even without, even with Bobby in interim.
All right, and if I remember, there were three built, rebuilt, renovations. What about those projects?
The CDBG, yes, those are still moving ahead as well. So we're finishing some of the reporting that needs to be done to the state and working with the contractors that were selected.
So the main two projects in the CRA is the skate pump and the trail?
And the downtown trail, yes.
May I ask, I remember a few months ago, we talked about signage. Was that part of the CRA?
The downtown signage, the wayfinding, yes, that is a CRA project. I'm not involved in that one, no.
That one I know is, that's public services. It should be in the next couple of weeks. We're just finalizing the contract for, we got two different contracts. We have one for the sign itself. We have one for the base with the cement.
Yeah, they're working on the install contract.
Yeah.
Okay, so we do have some CRA projects moving.
The wayfinding sign, the Apopka Trail and the Skate Park is moving along, and some of the day-to-day stuff is moving along as well. Oh, and some of the day-to-day stuff is moving along. It's on.
Okay.
Okay, I was between getting up and.
Well, I guess, and to kind of wrap this up in total, thank you for the, that was the update. Just trying to understand, you provided.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. If we can, it looks like this is probably gonna fall under, Main Street's probably gonna fall under community development. If we can just tentatively put a line item for $50,000 there and move that around as needed, because it looks like they're underspending in that department this year by $700,000, so.
So you wanna try to address it in '24 and?
'24, '25, not in '23, '24, just moving forward.
Okay.
Unless you feel bad that we can do it quicker and sooner.
Well, you're gonna have to take it out of reserves anyway, regardless. So if we do, if you make a decision in '24, then, you know, we'll make sure it rolls over or whatever it needs to do. So if they can finalize the agreement, y'all come to a consensus of how you wanna move forward, even with that amount, and then we can do a budget amendment for it.
I think that'd be wise, just to budget something, not committing us to one thing or the other, but just having it there so we don't have to do an amendment down the road.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding?
You know, that we already discussed it with you, and I think I did send an email regarding the discretionary funds.
Yes, ma'am.
And I spoke briefly before the meeting with our Chief Administrator, and that is for us, the city, to put together some kind of policy regarding whether it's through a resolution or a policy regarding the discretionary funds and how it's managed to oversee it and, you know, what the parameters are in order for us to utilize that discretionary fund. Because it is showing up on the budget, so I wanna be able to have something for our taxpayers to be able to reference and have the information as to how each of the Commissioners, including the Mayor, how much each of us get and how we disperse it.
Agreed.
And then the other thing was, I was, I was, of course, I saw the memberships here that our mayor is, does pay for. And I just wanna kind of understand, is it just solely for him or any of the Commissioners ever kind of invited, or can they go to any of these meetings? I mean, we have Metro, Metro Plus Orlando, Metro Plan Orlando, we have the Marketing Economic Development. That's, how much is that? $10,000? What is that for?
Marketing, that's under the Mayor's Budget?
Yeah, that's under the Mayor's Budget where it says a Marketing Economic Development, $10,000.
Is that new? I don't think it's new.
I don't think it's new.
Previous?
Yeah.
What is that?
Trying to think. What we, I know we had some money in for, well, it was marketing under.
Under that. I'll get you the details on that, Commissioner.
Because it's being, is it being added for 2025?
I don't think it's new. I would have identified it, but I'll let you know what we've done with that in the past and who we paid it to.
Because it is saying 2025, you're bringing it forward.
Yeah.
And then we have the Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce Executive Trustee Program, which is $8,500.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we get, do we know what we get? What's our investment?
I get you what all is included with that membership level.
Okay, and the Florida League of Cities is $1,200, which the, I mean, the only thing we ever get from the Florida League of Cities is, of course, we do the ethics training, which I see that it is allocated and it's required of all of us. And then we do go to the conferences, and I know that.
And you have the monthly luncheons as well.
Right.
Your insurance is for that. Our insurance.
Yeah. Does that include the tri-county?
No, that's a separate one.
That's a separate one?
But it's in that, in that.
Okay, so both the tri-county and the Florida League of Cities, is that open to all the Commissioners?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, Visit Florida, that's interesting, the annual membership. What does that bring us?
Well, that's, we're now working, I know Radley and his team is working on some projects. Matter of fact, I think y'all are going down for the, maybe somebody down to the convention in Tampa or St. Pete. They just, it's a statewide network. It's for smaller, Visit Orlando's for the big boys. What Visit Orlando does is help with smaller venues or smaller festivals and whatnot. So what we're trying to do is tap in, especially with our two parks, you know, Wekaua State Park, Kelly Park, the Wildlife Drive, trying to tie those into some kind of a green place you'd want, you know, stop, stop in and be a part of, you know, Camp Weewaw could fit into that. So that whole ecotourism type venue is what we're trying to accomplish.
So do, does, so my question is to Director Radley, when you go to these, is it a conference you go to with Visit Florida?
We've not attended this one before, but typically, and what this one is, is a conference that gathers people that are part of the Visit Florida group. And it's a networking and marketing push. So as the mayor was speaking, one of the ideas was to come together and try and market our ecotourism side. We also have some TDT grants, applications that this would be a benefit of to try and market the large venues for those type of events.
And you're planning to attend that?
Either myself or one of my staff. We're still trying to determine who's scheduled.
It would be interesting if you can come back and just give us a little update.
Sure.
Because it is a good thing, in other words, to be outside of the city of Apopka to promote some of the amenities that we have here. All right, thank you. And then Commissioner?
Yes. Our Economic Development Director has some more information on that particular membership.
Thank you. Just for a point of clarification, Visit Florida is the marketing arm for the state of Florida. So with your membership, you get enhanced visibility of the resources and the assets that you have available within the city. It also gives you opportunity for discounted rates for the different conferences and things of that nature that they make available. So essentially, what you're getting is the additional visibility at the state level beyond just what Visit Orlando offers, just for a point of clarification.
And that's with the marketing?
No, that's Visit Florida. I'm not certain what the marketing one is for economic development. Just wanted to provide that clarification on what Visit Florida does and how the city can benefit from their membership there.
Okay. I know newspapers and magazines, we get those. Then there's the Rotary Membership, Tiger Bay Membership, and the Orlando Economic Partnership. That's a biggie one. What does that one give us? So what do we do with that one?
So the Orlando Economic Partnership is the regional economic development entity. We are joining them as a member so that we can participate in board meetings, events that they have. They host events with site consultants that come in, and we get invited to those. They have preparation meetings, planning meetings, things of that nature, and we get pulled in as a participating municipality at a different level than a non-member. So this is just formalizing the relationship that we have with our regional economic development partner.
Are you the representative for us?
I am.
Okay, and so the only thing I ask is, you know, to either send us an email and, or either make a presentation when you do go so that we have an idea of how we're promoting ourselves and what's available to us.
Of course.
Then they have here training, mayor and Commissioners. I thought that was interesting. I don't know, training besides ethics, besides the Ethics Conference. I don't know what other training.
Well, not sure, but you did spend $3,000 in 2023. I'll get those details for you. So you have a budget of?
Because then it has Commissioners, $4,000.
And the mayor probably does his own training.
Yeah, it doesn't break down what training. Only because other than the Ethics Conference and really going to the Florida League of City conferences, to my knowledge, I haven't participated in any other training.
Now, I'll get you the details for FY '23.
There are a lot of different training. There are a lot of different trainings that I've been invited to. You have like the women in the municipality trainings. So there are a lot of trainings that I don't think we're taking advantage of, that I know other elected officials are actually attending. So I think it'll be a good idea to definitely keep that in the budget, because if there's a lot of training out there, then we probably haven't taken advantage of.
I know. It sounds good, but I haven't been offered any training.
Well, I think is, if we probably, because I wasn't offered this training, but after doing some research, there are trainings out there. So I think that's something that I actually was gonna bring up, is how do we get within the budget for us to attend these trainings? So.
Any training that you do would come out of this budget.
Okay.
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 That's pretty much it. Let me, again, remember, my iPad did not have these, the budgets until early today.
Yeah, I confirmed with Commissioner Anderson, and she said she did see it on Wednesday.
Yeah, I actually had this, this, this year, yes, I had it.
Okay.
Yeah, it was posted on Wednesday. Any other commissioner did not see it on Wednesday?
I didn't.
Oh, God, you didn't. Commissioner Nestor, did you see it on Wednesday?
I didn't, but.
See it now. We worked hard to get it to you on Wednesday before the holiday. Any other questions on this?
Yes. Uh, how much is the membership for the National League of Cities?
Under the mayor's budget?
It's not in there, but I, I would like to know.
Ten, I want to say ten thousand?
Dollars?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, well, then let me ask you another way. Are, are we allowed to, as commissioners, to attend without the city being a member?
I think the answer is yes. I will find out.
Alright, because I would like to attend.
Okay.
Is that the National League? Where is that listed?
It's not.
It's not.
I, I will find out.
Alright, because I've seen some trainings that they have.
Yep.
It's not on there.
It's not on there.
So it would come out of the training budget if you go, is what you're saying?
Come out of the training budget, but I'll, I'll find out.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's the National League of Cities?
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's not listed.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, there was one more. I thought that was interesting. Uh, printing overtures. That was twelve thousand dollars and neighborhood restoration, twenty five thousand dollars.
Which budget are you looking at?
Say that again.
Whose budget are you looking at?
I guess I'm still in the mayor's office.
Okay.
That's on the first page at the bottom. It has um, printing overtures, twelve thousand dollars and neighborhood restoration, twenty five thousand.
I think that twelve thousand is for the um.
Regular planning.
Black History Month booklet, I know it's, that's, that was a big chunk of that. And it's just all of the things that we print.
The various printing.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, the neighborhood restoration.
That, that's for, um, which we hadn't had any participation. That's a program that people want to uh, upgrade their entrances to their neighborhoods. It's, it's some money we put in there for neighborhood improvements.
Have we used that?
No.
No, ma'am.
So is that being carried over?
Just re-budget it at this time.
Excuse me?
Re-budget it.
So we haven't used that at all?
No.
No.
Is there anything in our website that, that lets our residents or the communities know that this money is available to them?
I don't know.
I don't think they.
Was this something that Chuck was gonna lead, ma'am?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think this was some, I think Chuck was gonna lead this effort. Yeah, at some point, and we do have that same twenty five thousand in the current year budget and no, it has not been used.
I think it's more so just awareness because I think it's something that's important.
All right, so that, do we have any kind of applications for that?
I don't think the program was actually set up just yet, if I'm understanding correctly.
Because it's, is it showing, is it something that you're bringing forth for twenty five? Or did we have that in twenty four?
Yes, ma'am, it's in twenty four and we want to continue it in twenty five.
In which departments does this?
It's under the mayor's budget, ten ten, under the mayor's budget for right now.
All right, so I'm gonna make a note that we're going, so we don't have a policy yet. Do we have a policy written on that?
Not that I'm aware.
So implement. So we don't have a policy, but we're allocating the money?
It was allocated in the twenty twenty four budget and I guess Chuck never got around to doing it. I knew it was something that he and the mayor had spoke about. So, and we want to really try to implement the program, so we're rebudgeting and in twenty five. So if we don't get it implemented, we can see what we need to do.
I think it's important to definitely implement that.
Yes, one, one last question. Uh, the budget for the Apoca Youth Council, does that include them attending the uh, state convention next year?
All the funds that we've had in finances is in that budget. There should be funds available for that.
Okay.
And if I can, just follow up on the, all the active memberships we have, we can all, as commissioners, be invited or whatever may be, just can we get a list of all our active memberships? And then what access we have to all of those, please?
You mean, under the mayor's budget?
Correct. Any, anything that's listed here that we're paying?
Yeah, and I, I'm gonna get her some details on that and I think the mayor's gonna assist with that effort to find out what you can and cannot.
Yeah, all of our memberships, please, and then any, any access that are, that all of us have to it. I think would be valuable.
And I just looked it up, the National League of Cities, the dues would be about sixty five hundred.
Six five hundred.
Yeah, if you want to be.
If needed.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Either, I'm not hearing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Got a little something. It's sixty five hundred dollars for the membership of the National League of Cities.
Where is it? Where do?
It's DC.
He just looked it up.
It's not in the budget.
Oh, it's not in the budget. I just looked it up.
Okay, I, I was confused. Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and I don't.
I'm in response to Commissioner Smith.
Do we have it? And I'm saying, well, where is it on the budget? So you were asking if we can have a membership to the National.
Correct, and how much you want.
Okay.
Go to the League of Cities.
Okay, so the National League of Cities, it's sixty five hundred. And I thank you for the clarification.
The, there's a line on, on the first page, Commissioner travel for eight thousand. Is that new or something we've always had?
On the first page, commissioners travel?
Well, that's for the convention. Last year, we didn't have it in there because the convention was local and you couldn't, you couldn't um, you couldn't charge in your room. All you could get was the mileage. So every other year, it's in, it's the diplomat, so, well, could, could change, but for now, the uh, we pay every other year because it's, it's, I want to say it's fifty miles, blanche?
Could be, yeah, as long as it's outside, yes, outside the city. But it, the eleven thousand was in the FY twenty four adopted budget. So we have eleven, I think it's eleven thousand this year, maybe, yeah, same amount.
Okay.
So I think your question was, is it in the current budget? And I think it is. So, but you didn't use it like the mayor said, because the local.
Okay.
So you're carrying the eight thousand?
It's, it's a re-budget. It's not a carry forward. Capital is what we typically carry forward. This, if this recurring, they, they budget the same thing again the following year.
So you actually had eight thousand for twenty four when we were local?
Yeah, but the conference ended up being local, so you didn't have to use it. Is what I'm being told, so I, I have to bear for.
Mr. Anderson, have you got any?
Okay.
Anybody, anybody else? Any other questions?
Thank you.
I don't know whether we want to, anybody from the public wants to speak on these first and it will, then we'll go to that. Yeah, come on up.
Okay.
We'll just, we'll, we'll do it by, rather than do it at the end with everything. I think it's just be easier.
Hello, I'm Amira and I'm here on behalf of Main Street. Unfortunately, Caitlin, who you all know, um, our executive director.
Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Sorry?
Name and address.
Oh, Amira Melnichenko, two five zero four Orchard Drive.
Okay.
Um, Caitlin couldn't be here. She's actually getting ready to go to the uh, National Main Street Conference this week, so I am here on her behalf. My question for you, which thank you so much, Commissioner Nesta, for bringing up Main Street, because it's incredibly important um, that we get on this budget. But um, I'm a layperson, so it's to give me a summary of what we just talked about here that we are not going to be on the budget for this year, but that fifty thousand dollars would be on the budget for next year. What does that timeline look like? Because this is our foundational building block. If we push this off further and further and further, this really delays our ability to get started with these big projects that we have. Once we are able to get that, we can start applying for other grants. Part of the Main Street program is to show that your community is involved and to get that financial support. And so without that, we're kind of hindered. So I feel that if we continue to push this off and um, after Michelle spoke recently, she just said that um, she doesn't feel comfortable with the contract. I'm not involved in the contract. I have no idea what's going on there. But they're going back and forth and she said that that should go to the CRA director, but you don't have a CRRA director and when will that will get filled? So my concern is, is this gonna happen anytime soon? Because it, it's very, very important that we, we get this on our budget or else we're kind of paralyzed here.
Are, are you looking to have that money as a seed money? Have you raised any money?
We have raised our own funds as well. Um, I am not involved in all that, but we do have local sponsors. Um, and we've been able to get donations and things like that, but that will be the, the bulk of us getting started is, is the city. And that is through the Main Street program, which is a federal program um, that we follow a blueprint for. Um, the Main Street America, remember she came and spoke to all of us and, you know, was kind of explaining the formula. And essentially, um, the big bulk of the getting started is to get funds from your city. And then after the city funds are in, then we can start applying for other grants, show that our community has skin in the game, essentially, um, for us to move forward. So it's just, it's really important that we get these funds sooner than later. Um, and that's what I'm here to stress. So I don't know if there's a way that we, I just, I was feeling a little bit concerned. I'm very, I was here just to make sure we talked about it today, but I've been feeling a little bit concerned. I'm excited to hear that we're in the budget, but when is that going to come to fruition?
Well, you're not in the budget yet, so.
Potentially in the budget.
Correct, potentially in the budget. And it would be fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, so it would start in October.
Starting in October and then that would be opening the discussion in October. I'm just trying to clarify because I don't know how any of this.
My advocacy is to have it budgeted for then.
Okay.
And be able to be allocated from there, but I don't know, it depends on what the contract says and all that. So there's a lot of variables that are my understanding in that right now, too.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that we, we do get this, you know, addressed because it's very important. And the longer that we drag this out, the harder it will be for us to um, get started, because we have great ideas, we have a great team all together. We're all excited. We have a ton of volunteers and, you know, we have huge ambitions for what we're gonna do, but this is the first step for us, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Rod Olson, thirty one fifty six Rolling Hills Lane in Apoca. Uh, just a couple of comments and then questions. Uh, the CRA process and talking to a former uh, Florida city manager. They got away from dealing with CRA, dealing with grants, because as much as that money means coming in by the time and time and effort to dot every I, cross every T of what the grant requires, they found it was a waste of time and you're better off to just do it yourself on your own timetable. Comment on that. On the aspect of organizations, who to join, what to join, all I can speak from is my experience primarily in healthcare. And we had a hundred and one different organizations people are a member of and every year, we made people qualified. At the end of the year, what meetings were held, when were they held, who attended, what was the results of the outcome of the meetings? Does it make sense to be a member? Some of it's a matter of, in some occasions, it's a matter of you're out, you're out. But if nobody goes and nobody's walking away with anything, that's a problem. And finally, my question for Mr. Sherman and Mr. Smith is, can you please tell me that everything in this budget encompasses what you need in people, in supplies, materials, in order to get the job done? To make our taxpayers happy and furthermore, to address the growth that we have.
Well, that's something we can discuss later, but I'll, I'll let you know, no, it's not enough.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, and what areas is it not enough?
Every single one.
Okay, every single one. Thank you.
All right, move on. Bradley, come on down.
Yeah, we're, we're ready, we're ready to go on to the, the only, I just want to make one comment. And that is that in this discussion that we've just had, it appears that we have funds allocated for things that we have not used and we don't know if we're going to use.
In the twenty four budget?
Yeah.
Yes. We don't always spend everything that we budget for, but yes, there are some things.
And I, I, I believe that the reason why we haven't spent it is because we were unaware of it. And the, in some of these programs, like that restoration program, I was unaware of it. And I'm sure the taxpayers weren't aware of it. And this is something that we can actually have on our website for different uh, developments to have, to know that they can add this. We need to put this on the website.
Yeah, so this was approved for the budget last?
It was in the detailed budget, but I think she's saying it wasn't discussed or anything like that, but it was in the information provided.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with the new budget, things that we're putting in this budget that our taxpayers can utilize. And to show how we're spending some of this money is important. It, it, it just needs to be more transparent.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Rodney?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, good to be with you tonight. I'm here to present uh, the Parks and Recreation Department budgets. Uh, our department oversees five operational budgets and the recreation impact fee budget up on the screen there. I provided a pie chart of those five budgets and the rec impact fee to kind of show the allocation uh, across our budget request. You'll see our largest uh, budget requests are from parks maintenance, athletics and events, and facilities maintenance. Park maintenance, park maintenance is a little self-explanatory. It's all the park properties and facilities in the city, athletic fields. Athletics and events has a lot going on in that budget. We have our athletic programming, so our youth soccer, youth flag football, youth basketball. We also have our recreational programming, which would be like our senior programming, our summer camps. And then we also have our events uh, budget in that thirty six twelve budget. So it comprises a lot of different operational units. And facilities maintenance, uh, of course, oversees all of our maintenance and repairs throughout the city. FY twenty four, we have currently forty three full-time positions and fifty seven seasonal positions. As we go through these uh, presentation, you'll see we are asking for some additional positions to help uh, with the operations. Uh, to include eleven full-time and thirty six additional seasonal part-time. As I mentioned, we are broken into those divisions, uh, parks maintenance, athletics, recreation, events, which is Camp Weewaw as well. Uh, and facilities maintenance. I'll start with parks maintenance budget. Uh, the table gives you a little look at what uh, our operational and capital costs uh, are uh, from year to year. Uh, we are asking for two additional positions. One is a full-time parks worker position to help assist with the uh, athletic fields. And a second is a part-time parks worker to help assist with our tournaments and weekend coverage. Increased funding requests in our operating budgets include uh, thirty four hundred, other contractual. Uh, we had to increase the numbers there for the new athletic fields that are being built at the sports complex. Uh, forty six hundred repair and maintenance for increased walkway repairs at Northwest Complex. Fifty two hundred general operating for additional supplies and materials. Again, we're adding new fields to the complex. It's going to increase the cost of what we need to put on those fields. And also fifty two sixteen, uh, the Tree Bank was funded again this year using uh, collected funds from the Tree Bank. That was at five hundred thousand dollars. That was not in the budget last year. Um, but those are funds that are dedicated from the Tree Bank uh, funding. And they can be used for new trees, uh, replacing dead trees throughout the city. Looking at new initiatives and capital in parks maintenance, uh, in our improvements of the building, which is six three hundred line. We are looking to expand the concrete walkways at Northwest Complex. If you've walked through the, the baseball diamonds, uh, the quads at the complex. The sidewalks are a little small, which you can tell by the dirt paths that are on either side of the sidewalks. So we've asked for some additional funding to expand those. That's going to be a year-over-year process because the concrete cost is expensive right now. So we're asking to try and get one of the quads up to, up to speed there. We're asking for another rectangular steel pavilion to help house some of our equipment uh, at our parks maintenance warehouse. Uh, this is equipment that can be stored outside, but it's better if it has a cover over it uh, to keep it out of the elements. Then also some new security fencing at the parks warehouses. Right now, if you drive over there, the warehouses are not fenced in. Anybody can walk up behind the buildings, get, get access to the buildings. Um, and also it's, from an aesthetic standpoint, it'd be nice to put fence around that area, close it off, so people don't have to see it when they're driving in. Uh, equipment and machinery, we're asking for a new Toro Sampro. That's a groomer for the clay and fields. Uh, two uh, replacement trucks, F two fifties, and a replacement zero-turn mower. So I can stop here, I can go through all the budgets and come back, whatever the pleasure of the board.
Any, any questions on that so far? Um, you said expanded concrete walkways at Northwest. Where at exactly?
So if you go look at the quads in between the baseball softball fields. So if you go look at the quads in between the baseball softball fields, those areas when you're going, like at the Little League opening day, if you're walking from the parking lot.
Right.
A lot of those sidewalks are very narrow. So what happens is we can't maintain the grass on the side because the traffic, they go off the sidewalk. So there's not enough room for them to walk down the sidewalk. So we're looking to expand those.
And the rectangular steel pavilion, where is that?
That'd be at the Parks Maintenance Buildings over by Gate Five.
Say that again?
By the Parks Maintenance Buildings, over by Gate Five. So it's to store equipment. So we're looking to put a, a structure in to, to keep the elements off the equipment and then put a fence around that area to secure the equipment.
There's, and we discussed this maybe a year ago, in reference to accessible parking, we have all, all around all the fields, but a lot of times there's not sidewalks directly next to those. So people are having to push wheelchairs, whatever it may be, over speed bumps, things like that. And we're getting issues over that. Is any of that contemplated in this?
Yeah, so that, that would be in our repair and maintenance line item. And we, we do have, we're going to try and get some of that started before the fiscal year ends. But we do have, we did ask for some additional funding in that line as well to do repair work. And basically, what Commissioner is speaking of is we've got some spaces that don't, they have a curb still where the striping is. So put a curb cut and a little connecting sidewalk to the sidewalk that is existing is what we're looking to do.
Thank you.
Hey, I see the replacement of the one zero-turn mower. So do we have enough mowers to actually maintain all the fields with additional fields?
Yes, so the, the zero-turn mower is more for our common ground area. And the equipment, we got two of them this year. We're sitting pretty good in those right now. But that one additional mower will replace an old one.
Where were those stored?
Those are stored in the Parks Maintenance Building warehouses.
And that's where you want to get that security fencing?
Yes, so part of the, part of the problem is we have some of the larger tractors that, that can be stored outside in the pole barn scenario. We have to put them inside because we don't have security, we don't fence it around that shop area. So this outdoor area will let us park some of those tractors outside, put some of the smaller equipment inside. And then also, like I said, put a fence around that area to, to secure it and then also beautify it a little bit.
Did we already go over?
No, we haven't.
I'll wait for the next page.
Next budget is thirty-six twelve Athletic and Events. As I had mentioned earlier, this budget contains a lot of different operating units. It includes our athletics, so youth and adult, our recreation programming, senior programs, summer camps, and also our events, community events. We are asking for nine additional full-time positions and thirty-five additional seasonal positions in this budget. I've listed there the operations that these positions would go towards. Apopka Community Center, as we had worked with the VFW to come to a new use agreement. We do need some additional positions there to help run that building. It's two full-time and two seasonal part-time. The tennis pickleball operations, we are getting close to the design phase commencing. Still anticipating a construction to start by the end of the year. We're going to need these positions to help staff that location. We're also looking to increase our level of service at the Northwest Complex for our tournament operations. We're asking for three full-time and six seasonal part-time. Right now, our athletic staff help run or help coordinate with the third-party tournaments that are on-site during the weekends. As our athletic programming numbers have continued to grow to the eight-hundred, nine-hundred numbers in soccer and to the four-hundred, five-hundred numbers in the other programs, it's getting more and more challenging for that staff to divert to the tournaments to give them the proper attention. So we're asking for some additional staff to focus on those tournament operations and, and increase the level of service provided there. We're asking for three seasonal positions for our amphitheater community events. Those events continue to grow. And that'll help alleviate some of the overtime that we're currently having to use. We are asking for twenty-two seasonal positions for some new programming, which I'll cover here shortly, and Athletic Summer Camp. And we're asking for administrative specialist, a one full-time position to help our department overall with some of the administrative paperwork and processes. We do a lot of work through, especially through Facilities Maintenance, Parks Maintenance, court orders, requisitions. We need some help administratively, somebody in an office at a desk that can dedicate without getting called to the outside field work all the time.
So I know you're asking for all these additions, what do we have right now?
So we currently have.
Where is that?
It was on that first slide.
It's on the first slide?
We currently have forty-three full-time and fifty-seven seasonal. A lot of that seasonal is at Camp Weewaw.
Full-time and?
Forty-three full-time and fifty-seven seasonal. And majority of that seasonal is currently at Weewaw.
Currently where?
At Camp Weewaw. It's about thirty-five, I believe, are at Camp Weewaw. And we're asking for a total of eleven full-time and thirty-six seasonal.
So that will bring you up to what?
That'll bring us to.
This is what you have currently?
Yep, fifty-four, that'll bring us to fifty-four full-time. And eighty's, ninety-three seasonal. And seasonal part-time, they are scheduled as needed. So if we have program running, we schedule seasonal. If we have an event, a seasonal person will help work that event.
And you're saying most of this will be utilized at Camp Weewaw?
No, none of this, none of the new position requests are for Camp Weewaw. The current, the current staffing majority is at Camp Weewaw for seasonal.
Where do you get your seasonal from? Is that part of the, the youth?
We hire seasonal just like we hire a full-time employee. So we'll put a job advertisement out, interview.
So career source, do we still?
It's under my budget.
It's under your budget? So how many do we hire from there?
I don't, how many do you have from Career Source?
We didn't have any this summer, no.
In the summer, okay.
Do we have Career Source right now?
No, it's, yeah, it's still.
No, usually we know.
Youth workers.
Are we, are we having a?
It's youth works. And yes, I think, I'm not sure if it's finished or not.
Oh, it's finished, when did it start?
I think Stephen is overseeing that. And I think he just recently gave y'all an update at the last meeting of some of the things that they were doing.
I'm not sure if it's finished or not.
Yes, so we'd have to get that information from him.
I think he's looking for more, it was some type of outreach he was going to start doing to get more people in the program, kids in the program.
Exactly, he's trying to improve more. Because I think they only have about, how many, seven mayors?
Wasn't that many?
Well, no, that's.
I'm talking about.
We had a hundred and sixteen.
That program?
Yeah, a hundred and sixteen, I think, something like that. That's all three programs.
Career Services.
Yeah.
But Stephen is the one that oversees that.
And that you said is in your budget?
We're transferring it from finance to the mayor's budget this year in the twenty-four, twenty-five. But Stephen is the one that oversees that.
It has here Apopka Youth Council, Health Fair, and Food.
No, not that.
Does it have events where it's?
Where is that?
Youth, did the youth works.
That was under the mayor's budget that we just discussed.
Youth Council. I'm missing this. I'm missing this, where is it, under the mayor's?
Youth Works, it's on the second page, mid, about a third of the way down. Or excuse me, is it the first page? No, first page, I'm sorry, first page. Third of the way down.
Top, go higher, higher.
Thirty-five thousand, you see that?
Keep going, keep going higher.
Oh, I see, here it is. Apopka Youth Works, okay, Career Source, thirty-five thousand. So we had how many?
He said about a hundred and sixteen attended the program. From the various schools, right?
Correct.
Where was that posted? For the jobs for Career Source?
I think they do the program, as I recall.
They, Career Source posted the jobs and the chamber posted the business side of it.
Okay. I didn't see any of that. And the chamber's still involved with this?
Yeah.
Where were they meeting and recruit, because I remember.
They went to, this year they went to Valencia.
And interviewing them?
Valencia. West Campus.
Was that posted anywhere? Was that posted anywhere?
Not that I'm aware of, but Career Source usually handles that and they work through them. We just contribute.
We just contributed thirty-five thousand?
Yeah, we contribute to the program. So, and the program is, is, you know, coordinated through Career Source. That's how it was done in the past. So I'd have to get an update from Stephen to see what actually happened, but.
Because I, I do remember when Dr. Jackson would interview, we would hold them here. I remember with Career Source that they would do all the interviews here.
They haven't done that since I've been here.
Since, yeah?
No, yeah, I'm not saying they didn't do that in the past, but since I've been here, I didn't, no, Career Source was handling everything.
Okay, it's just informational.
Yeah.
So we have a hundred and sixteen that we hired.
That's what the mayor said, there was a hundred and sixteen that attended the program that were offered by Career Source.
Okay.
Okay, we also.
Thank you.
We also had some increased funding requests across our operating lines, thirty-four hundred other contractual. We've increased some service needs for the programming, Athletic Summer Camp, which I'll cover on the next slide. And then our existing programs continue to grow, season over season. So that would include our officials, scorekeepers, those all go under the other contractual services. Forty-four hundred rentals, leases. This is to help rent a temporary facility at Tennis Pickleball Complex. Again, the, the immediate drive was to get the courts, is to get the courts built. So this will have a little restroom facility and some space for an office to operate out of while we continue to build the courts. Fifty-two hundred for new programming, again, the Athletic Summer Camp and growing existing programming numbers. So that includes any of the jerseys, supplies that are needed for the existing programs, goes in fifty-two hundred. And then fifty-two oh one, that, some additional Apopka Proud funding and increase in orchestra event costs. New initiatives and programs in improvements of the building sixty-three hundred. We are requesting to install new LED lights on Pad Seven at the Northwest Rec Complex. This field currently does not have any lights, it's one of our largest fields. So this will help us utilize this better in the evening hours. And then in sixty-four hundred Equipment and Machinery, we're requesting one additional F-one-fifty and replacing one utility car. New initiative, new programming, the Athletic Summer, Athletic Summer Camps. We have an opportunity and have presented in the budget to expand our summer camp programming at two different locations at the schools, Wheatley Elementary School and Apopka Middle School. We've budgeted, or we've put in the budget request eleven new seasonal part-time staff for each school. We've estimated program revenues at a hundred and four thousand dollars. That's at a hundred campers a week. Apopka Middle Program, same thing. Program details, we're looking at an eight-week program, which would be June and July. It'd be open to children ages six to thirteen. Again, a hundred children per week per school. Plan registration fee at a hundred and thirty dollars a child. We do offer scholarships and a scholarship program that would also be available for this, these programs. And the children in the program will learn about and play a mix of traditional and unique sports. So a little bit different than our Billy Dean Day Camp, which we can only register about forty to fifty due to the size of the building. That's a very traditional summer camp. You're going on a couple of field trips a week, you got a playground there, you do some camp activities. This would be, these programs would be geared more towards sports and active programming. We would still take them on one field trip a week. And then a little note there, similar to earlier in the budget discussion, there's a transfer of funds in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred from the, the police budget that was budgeted in this current fiscal year. That's not being budgeted in FY twenty-five, but rather would go into this program. So there's kind of a little offset there.
Got a couple of questions on this one.
Yeah.
If I may, if I'm reading this correctly, we're running the camps at eleven thousand dollars loss, loss per school?
There's a little bit of loss now. These are projected numbers. Kind of varies depending on the field trip. But we did estimate kind of on the higher end for the field trip. Again, to, to really illustrate what that could look like.
Okay. And then we're offering scholarships, is that, are we partnering with other entities that are contributing to this?
So we have a, we currently have a sponsorship agreement with Advent Health and they contribute every year fifteen thousand dollars towards scholarships, programming scholarships. So that's what we utilize for this, we utilize this same scholarship program.
Okay, so that's, that's who funds the scholarship?
That's who, currently, that's the only funding source for the scholarships, yes.
Understood, okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, Bradley?
All right, move on to Facilities Maintenance, ten twenty-two. There's again, look at the FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five budgets and the change there. We are asking for one additional maintenance worker two position at the full-time. We do have some increased funding requests in our operating budgets. Some of those lines identified thirty-one hundred professional services. We're asking for some additional funding as compared to this year for architect engineering services. That could be anything from an architect to help with design on some office space or an electro engineer to come problem solve or rework electrical system for us. Thirty-four hundred other contractual. We have an increased need for janitorial and demolition services. We do have a couple of buildings, city properties that still need to be taken down that we budgeted some money this year. Looks like it's not going to be enough, so we've asked for, to rebudget and ask for a little bit additional for that. Forty-six hundred repair and maintenance. We've added an itemization for emergency repairs and increased requests for citywide painting and ceiling. So there's a lot of facilities and properties that we're looking to try and get painted this year coming up. To again, help with that curb appeal. Fifty-two hundred general operating. Again, we have an increased need for janitorial, so we're going to need some more janitorial supplies and just the general supply, general repair supplies, we need a little boost there. And fifty-five hundred, we're asking for a little bit of additional training for our staff, for CEUs. We do have a master electrician on staff now and some HVAC technicians that need to keep current with their certifications. Some new initiatives in the Facilities Maintenance Budget, sixty-two hundred. We're looking to re-roof eight city buildings at the cost of three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. We are looking at museum log cabin repairs in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. At the old Chamber Building, we've put a, an estimate together for two hundred thousand dollars. And at the Apopka Community Center, we're looking to take down the interior wallpaper and paint the inside of that building. And Equipment and Machinery, sixty-four hundred. We are looking to upgrade the security access system throughout the city. We do need one additional F-one-fifty truck for that new staff member. And we do have some new officer, replacement officer furniture for multiple departments across the city. And then two hot water boilers at the, at the Apopka Community Center.
I have a couple of questions on this one.
Yep.
The museum repairs.
Yeah.
What is that in, what, what is that?
So if you go to the west side of the building, there's probably about, what, five feet up? There's sections of the log cabin that are starting to deteriorate. So really what we have to do, we have to have some new log structures built, pull gold out, put new back in. It's, it's in need for some repair on that side of the building.
Sure. No, not, well, and the reason I'm asking too is I know that they're looking to expand as well, so I want to make sure we're funding and, and helping them out in that capacity. I know it's not, that's under your.
Yeah, so we had, last year we had put together a, an assessment of the structure, structural assessment, and then also an option for expanding the museum, which I believe at the time I'd shared, I can reshare that again. There is some options for that, the cost is, I think, over. There is some options for that, the cost is like over a million dollars for kind of the option we were looking at. I'll definitely share that back with you all. But as far as repairs, we didn't want to wait and in the plans, or in the proposed plans of the expansion. That would have to be repaired anyways. So those walls would still be there, so we don't want to wait any longer.
No, absolutely.
Fixed up.
Okay, perfect, thank you on that one. In reference to the old Chamber Building, this may not, well, it is you two. What is our, I mean, they had a lease in place, they left the lease. They left the property not in the way that it was provided, not normal wear and tear. Is there any, are we getting any funds from the Chamber? Any leftover insurance funds that they had, receipts of what they've already done, things of that nature?
I haven't had a chance to discuss this with Jacob yet, but I think probably we should discuss this with Cliff a little further. And see, have him look at the agreement. I don't, just looking over it, I'm not a lawyer. I didn't see any really clause in there that might have triggered for additional funds to come our way, but we certainly can have Cliff take a look at it.
So you think that, not your legal opinion?
Right.
A opinion?
Just in my little brief review of it, I, I don't know, I just said that they could, either side could terminate the lease at any point. It did say they were responsible for taking care of the building.
Okay.
So I think, again, we'll need to have the lawyer look at that to determine.
That would be very.
How specific that clause was.
And then what are, what's our intentions of that building? What are we trying to do with it?
We still have a couple of options to build some office space for maybe relocating some departments. It's still kind of up in the air, we're still trying to determine the best reconfiguration of that space. But it's strictly an interior renovation, so it's not really changing much structure-wise.
Sure.
Just putting some new walls up.
Okay. And then the Apopka Community Center, I'm glad we're taking down the wallpaper in there, painting. The, my concern though is that we just spent ninety thousand dollars on new equipment and all that. Last few events I was there, it was not working properly. So I want to make sure whatever we do with that building or any of these buildings is that we get the best of the best spend what we're supposed to spend, but make sure we. Do we have a warranty on the equipment that's there?
Yeah, and if you could send me specifics of those times, I definitely want to look into that.
Absolutely, yeah, it's, it, for what we spent, it should be dummy proof and be able to work no problem. So we've had a few issues there on a couple of recent events there, so I want to make sure we're moving forward with that.
Do you plan to replace the wall that separates the, the bar from the rest of the space?
We're looking at potentially putting in. Like a divider sliding wall, so that can be closed off. That's really kind of where we're looking.
And all the other storage space that was built? What are we doing with that storage?
Off to the side where the, where the table, chairs are located. Is that what we're speaking of? Yeah. As of right now, those are staying, obviously when we take the wallpaper down, they're going to have to move that. Ideally, we'd like to kind of clean that area up. Right now, it's a, it's a matter of having enough storage space in the building. So.
Are we upgrading or doing anything to improve the restrooms?
Not currently in this budget. If we do have a little additional savings, it's something we can look at.
Because we don't have an, do we have an ADA bathroom in the?
I believe there is one in there.
There is one in there?
Yeah. So. I think the, the highest priority is getting that wallpaper off of the wall. And then get some new paint up there, to again, that'll help bring class up in the building a little bit. And, because wallpaper is a very dated option now.
And the kitchen? Lot of the kitchen equipment is not working.
Right, so that's, we're taking that over to VFW to make sure they get that fixed.
Who inspects the kitchen?
Well, it's going to be us checking through it on probably a biannual basis. And then it's going to be depending on, the VFW should check it too, it's their equipment, but we'll definitely check at least twice a year.
So as of August first, you will have someone full-time at?
Well, someone full-time, they'll be helping run the, run the community center and be on top of it.
Okay.
Any other questions on facilities? Okay.
I just, I won't comment, I know that you'll be going soon before the TDT board. Will you just give us an update, because I think it's coming up soon?
Sure, it's coming up, not this Friday, the following Friday, the nineteenth. And, yeah, we're working on finishing the presentation and I can certainly share that with you all.
And if we get any money, any funds from that, will that change anything here in our?
So if we, our awarded funds, the way these, this grant works, it's a reimbursement grant. So at that time, I believe what I would do with Jacob and Lynch is we'd bring back the agreement to accept. And that would come with a budget amendment to start the project. When the projects are completed, they would then reimburse and they go back into the city fund.
Which is typical what we do with most large grants.
Okay.
Well, the other thing was golf carts, will we be getting any new golf carts? Because when we do have some events, and I, I know that we made provisions now for the handicap parking. Because we actually create them with our signs. But a lot of times we have disabled seniors that still require kind of our assistance. And we're constantly looking for someone, even the golf carts that collect the garbage. We'll get them to kind of take someone up to their parking space.
Yes, so typically, we handle that through a rental. We'll rent additional carts if needed, because we're going for the passenger carts over the trash carts.
Right.
And it just depends on the event. So sometimes the larger events will bring those out. Like the Fourth of July event, we didn't have any out there. A lot of people come kind of last minute, although the crowd this year was definitely a lot bigger in the started event, which was nice to see. But we kind of didn't bring it this year because you park, you kind of walk in front of your car and walk back to your car. But for the larger events, we do try and bring a couple out. But we rent them, because we wouldn't use them all year long. So it makes more sense to rent those carts.
And just, just kind of help me, guide me as to where do you have, when, I know we have, we have a birch more that does our Saturday sounds. But I know that we also have a separate fund for like our Christmas and spring show with the symphonic.
Yes.
We just had the Fourth of July and I saw there were two sponsors, but do we contribute to that one, do we have?
Yes, so we budget for the community events out of that athletic and events, if you look at line fifty-two oh one.
Fifty-two oh one?
That's our amphitheater events, so that'll have, you know, Saturday sounds, it'll have the Philharmonic. We have a little bit of money for new events and then the Apopka Proud, and then fifty-two oh three is the other one. Fifty-two oh three is our community events. So they, they might be at the amphitheater, they might be at Kittingham Nelson Park. And they are itemized out by event for you.
Save, what page is that?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
And thank you.
So if you see, as far as fifty-two, fifty-one hundred.
Six, seven.
I'm sorry.
I'm here, okay. Page seven. Wow, these things are so tiny, I never use reading glasses, but I have to use them now.
So like fifty-two oh three, you'll see we have Halloween, Veterans Day, holiday tree lighting, MLK Day, Easter event.
Okay, so.
It's paging, it's on pages.
Yeah, it's all paging, sorry. So they are.
So I see the.
They're itemized there and then we do try and collect sponsorships or sponsors for those events, and those just go back to the general fund.
So here we have. So what's interesting is that, let me see, Fourth of July. All right, now let me see this. Well, I see the one that we're advertising right now with John Anderson and Sawyer, are we, are we paying for that?
Yes.
Is that listed?
Apopka Proud.
Where?
Apopka Proud, it's in fifty-two oh one.
That one's two hundred thousand dollars?
That's all the bank costs, yes.
In addition to that, I'm looking at the different events, I don't see anything in here with Juneteenth. Could we put something in the line item for Juneteenth?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's the pleasure of the commission, yeah, we can certainly add, we can add to whatever you want event-wise there. We do have a line, if you look, line number ten on fifty-two oh three, new community event expenses, we do ask for additional funding. Kind of just open funding, thirty thousand dollars, that if an event initiative comes up.
It's important just to be allocated like some of the others.
Yeah, that's fine, just, we, so for Emancipation Day.
You have Emancipation Day, so we.
For Hispanic and Emancipation, yes.
We do both, we do both. The Hispanic Heritage Festival event. All right, I. I always wonder where those expenditures or we allocate those funds. Who are we using to put on that Hispanic? I mean, where, where do we go, who uses? Who are we utilizing to help us put that together?
Oh, it just varies every year who comes, who we get to participate in that event. I know Steven, for those two events, we help assist, our, my department helps assist with the operations. We'll help with requisitions and things like that and day of. And then Steven helps coordinate those events and plan those. So if you were, if you're looking for a Juneteenth event, the Hispanic Heritage and the Emancipation, we currently budget at twelve thousand dollars. So I just need to know how much we want to put in for that other event.
How much are we budgeting, do we put in for the Christmas parade? Is that under?
So that's under partner event expenses, rotary, art foliage and, and the parade. And it did say Emancipation Day there, that's a typo, that should be out, because I got itemized by itself. So those three events, we allocate fourteen thousand dollars. But that covers expenses for all three and it's minor expenses for those events.
Understood.
Any other questions on facilities?
Well, I just want to walk in, Commissioner Anderson put in there that, that Juneteenth should be a line item similar to the rest, I think that's appropriate.
That is a part of the thirty, right, Bradley?
We can take, if we don't want to affect the, if we don't want to affect the line, I can take twelve from that thirty, put a separate itemization.
Yep.
And do it that way, so I'd reduce our thirty down a little bit, but that's what that line was for anyways, so we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up, Camp Weewah.
Camp Weewah, thirty-six, one, four. We're not requesting any new positions for FY twenty-five. We did have some small increases across operating budget to account for some price increases, nothing major. And the overall budget request was a, was a decrease and that was mainly because we're, we're not, we don't really have much capital requests this year. Compared to prior years. The only thing that we're asking for out of the capital budget is some funding to begin a design on a new pool. And associated aquatic facilities. The pool is aging rapidly. We constantly are fighting leaks and things of that nature with the pool. The pool deck is starting to show its age too. So rather than continue putting money into chasing these repairs on a fifty-plus-year-old pool. We'd like to start a design process on a new pool. That would also include maybe some restroom facilities at the pool, so the kids and the users don't have to walk to the dining hall. So this is some funding to start that project. We don't think the full amount, two thousand, will go towards just the design, but we wanted to start allocating some funds in that direction. This is also to the pleasure of the commission. We have a pool that's existing, but it's starting to show its age.
Allocate more fun, funds to come into, like we can rent, rent out the pool more to different organizations, so we'll create more revenue?
Well, the pool is highly used at the camp already. So not only with retreats, the summer camps there all the time, the two high schools, Wakava and Apopka, utilize it for their swim teams. They can't utilize it for their water polo, because the pools doesn't have a section deep enough for a water polo.
So are we, are we going to redesign it so it can be used for that?
Yeah, my recommendation is to completely start over, redesign, have an actual design built with the needs for that property. And we can also be mindful to some new opportunities that could come in because of that. It's also, a lot of pools that are built nowadays, recreation pools, have the zero-depth entry for full ADA access and ease, easier access for the kids. And also this pool, while it's not deep enough for water polo, it's still five feet deep at the shallowest. So for the summer camp kids, the younger kids, it's still a deep pool for them to play in. So some of them still wear life vests and things like that, so kind of looking at. I think Camp Weewah needs a pool. So I would recommend designing what we need out there, rather than continuing to dump money into an old pool.
So that's just the design, although you, you said that this doesn't, you don't think we're going to spend all that, but that's not the actual?
That's not the pool. The pool could run a lot more than that.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be.
Yeah. So this was to give us a safe push to start the design on it. If we need to, we could look at taking this down a little bit. But we wanted to have some funds there that didn't limit us from getting the design started. So by next budget year, I could maybe have a proposal ready for you to look at.
Well. You can go, I'm sorry.
Are you going to put it back in the same place?
In that general area, I think, I think it depends on, we would want to get some, some geotech done to make sure it's a good spot to put a pool. One of my thoughts is though, is because it's going to take a while to instruct a pool. We do it in the wintertime or we locate it, depending on the layout there, if we can put it in a little bit different area, maybe we don't have to shut the whole pool down yet. And kind of do a transition, but that's all, we're going to need professionals to come in and help us design that.
So I, I guess this is kind of off topic, but just, just some concern I want to note. So I think for me, what's more important in redesigning this, redesigning the pool is the fact that I just realized that. With the expansion of the northwest, north, northwest sidewalks. There's areas here in Apopka, we have Hawthorne Street, Seventh and Eighth Streets don't have any sidewalks. So I think it's more important that we focus on areas that don't have sidewalks. Because a lot of times, when I'm visiting, you know, a lot of the different residents here, when they're walking, they're more, they're walking in dirt. So I think that instead of expanding to make it more comfortable where there's already sidewalks. I think it's more important that we focus on areas that is currently walking in dirt. So that's a very great concern of mine.
Okay, yeah, so that would be in the public services budget, now again, we can, we can.
We've got the second, second trants of money, you know, it'll be over a million dollars we've spent in South Apopka for sidewalks. We did the first, was it two? Yes. Yes.
So they're ready, so that's already?
Yes. Yeah, we can get you, Commissioner, we can get you the. AJ, I don't know if you've got it or is that over, probably.
No, it's in public services.
Okay, so we'll get you, we'll get you the, they've already got all the sidewalks to be built or is in the plan, so it's, it's just a function of getting that to you.
Yeah, okay, and it's already been approved in the CRE funds for those.
It was a grant, yes.
It's a grant, yes.
Thank you, okay.
For Camp Weewah. We continue to spend. A few hundred thousand dollars a year on capex stuff. Do we cut at any point, stop the bleeding on that or just keep rolling this ball down the hill?
So I think this is where we're at, is kind of tapering this off a little bit. I think the next biggest thing is this pool. So a decision on whether we want to continue trying to Band-Aid the pool. Do we not want to have a pool at the camp or do we want to invest in a new pool? I think other than that, we've got, we've done a lot of work out there repair maintenance-wise to get the camp back into a good, good state. We do have some funds currently in this budget that we're working on to redo the high rope element, so that's already funded. That is like the other big piece to get finished. But as far as moving forward, capital, large capital expenses, we're kind of running down to where we're going to be pretty good for a little while. At least.
The pool's going to be expensive.
The pool's going to be huge, so the pool's going to be huge.
That, I mean, that could be set up your price tag pretty easily.
It could be a very big price tag.
Depending on what we do.
So it just depends.
As of May, six point six five million on that property. That's a big, that's a big number when other facilities need it as well, so.
Yeah, so this is. Yeah, so this is, again, this is really the direction that the commission would like to take this, that's my recommendation. Really it's the direction that the commission would like to take this. That's my recommendation on the pool. We can. Obviously do your pleasure, what you'd like to do with it. We could reduce the number, keep it where it's at. We could. Hold off and just throw some more money in repairs and maintenance to try and get it another year.
How much have we, uh, invested in just keeping it afloat?
Um, we, I'd have to get the numbers put together for you, but we also, there's still some leaks going on the pool that we don't have a number for yet. Uh, that a pool con, a pool constructor is gonna have to come in and tell us that price.
But it is safe for?
It's safe. It's safe to utilize. The, the chemicals are safe. The water's safe. It's just leaking. So we're losing a lot of water.
Where's it, where's it leaking? It's leaking in the, where is it?
It's, we got some leaking through the grout.
Grout.
Lines and then also we think there's a leak in one of the inlets.
Okay.
So it is, you know, from a water conservation, it's leaking. And it's, it's an old pool. So we're gonna, there's a chance that we keep plugging areas and other areas keep opening.
Did we go from septic to sewer?
That project begins in the fall. The water is about hmm, almost done. They had to pause for summer camp. They'll be back to do the connections, uh, for the water. And then the sewer program or project starts after that.
We spent a lot of money on that camp, millions and millions. Just wanna make sure we're doing what's right.
Next up cemetery.
Cemetery budget thirty five one two. Uh, again, we're not requesting any new positions for FY twenty four.
Oh, I did, yeah. You're talking cemetery.
Yep. Um.
To the next page. Wait, um, I had something for you regarding the cemetery. Cause I actually walked the cemetery. Who's here from the cemetery? You? Okay, wait a minute. What page is this, uh, for the cemetery?
You're going past it.
I think it's at the bottom. Eleven, I think.
This is. Thirty five twelve.
Oh no, it's, uh.
Oh, here it is. Uh, is that where you go up to thirty five?
Thirty five twelve, yes.
Okay. Here's what I have here. The columbariums. The columbariums.
This might be a Susan question.
I did ask her. I actually went to visit the ones that we have there. Who picked that location?
That was a determination of the staff. We work with the mayor. Um, it's by the gazebo down there.
The gazebo is kind of in bad shape. There's no sidebar. There's, it's on an incline. And they're facing each other like. Is that them?
Yeah, so I didn't get, that was coming up in the next slide.
Oh my God, I, I.
So.
It's. For me, when you go to a cemetery and you have this, um, there should be something that makes you feel like. I don't know, like you're, it's. I, and you're planning to do more, put more in this location?
Yeah, so and that's, there's the next slide on here. And a lot of the cemeteries around, this is what they do with their columbarium.
Yeah, but if you go to other cemeteries, there's something around it to kind of.
Not most of them, but we do have requested funds in here to do what you're speaking of, to put some walkways in, to put some pavers around them. And it'll be a cemetery, it'll be a columbarium, basically columbarium garden with a gazebo.
Right.
And that's what's requested in this budget.
Bunches and the kind of.
Yeah, because I'm, I, I mean, I walked up to it and I'm thinking. It's on an incline. There's nothing there. The gazebo is in poor shape. Um.
Yeah, and that's what we're hoping to address with this budget request. We're asking for a hundred fifty thousand dollars to replace that little gazebo and do walkways from. The paved area down to the gazebo.
Will that gazebo be used as a little chapel for, um?
Most people just, they just visit and sit in the gazebo.
Still they have some little.
Okay, um.
I can send you a little sketch of what.
Of what?
We kinda looked, what we're kinda looking like with the full thing finished. Uh, it's now, it's a sketch from me, so it's not. It's not by any means a landscape architect sketch, but I can send you the layout.
Location in that cemetery other than that incline? I mean, it's too late now. You put them there.
Well, the, the, the columbariums and where those are placed are flat. It's, now we need a walkway down to them and that's what we're asking in this budget.
I, why didn't I see that? I, I didn't see.
It's under improvements, under sixty three hundred. Funding to replace gazebo install.
I saw the columbariums on the incline. You're saying where they're at?
Yeah, they're flat.
But behind them is inclined. To get to them is an incline.
Right, so we're asked, we're asking to put some money in to put a walkway in for that.
Will that walkway be ADA compliant?
Yes.
And what about parking? Where, where?
So another benefit of that area is it is closest to the parking, the paved parking, which is right by the monument, the memorial. So. You know, ideally we stripe across from the parking to where the sidewalk, the new walkway will come down to that area.
And are you worried about the pa, the pavers can be a, a pain, especially on an incline, like maintenance?
Right, so the, the, the majority might be a sidewalk down the incline and then pavers around, kinda beautify around the, the columbariums.
Okay, cause that can be a real.
Pavers are kind of a, can be a mess in that scenario.
Yes.
Uh, cause you have rain washout and things like that. So it'd probably be a sidewalk during the incline. The new gazebo would be flush with the ground.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And this is going to be done this year?
We're asking for, we're asking money for FY twenty five. So this year we have two additional columbariums coming.
You have two additional, I saw.
So before total.
It was, yeah, cause the bid opening was on June eighteen.
Right.
And where are we getting these columbariums from?
I, the, was just awarded, right?
Yeah, it went through the process.
I think it was the same one as the first two.
Same one, one in the company. What's the name of the company you remember, Susan?
Quality Bolt.
Quality.
What was the name of it?
I think I suggested before that we needed fence on the backside of that.
Yeah, we're working on a, like a two rail fence to go along that backside to, to go down. From that hill. Yeah.
Oh, so you, did you visit that?
Oh, yes.
You did.
But even before they put those there, I suggested we put a fence there.
Yeah, we're working on a fence for that back area there.
Have we buried anybody in that yet? Okay. I have to go back and look to see again, cause I, I remember I walked it and I, and I thought. Why did we pick that incline?
Yeah, and the, the existing gazebo is raised off the ground. The replacement gazebo, we'd put flush with the ground. So again. You can roll down the sidewalk, get to the paper area. You don't have to go up a step or a ramp to the new gazebo. Um.
So you have a line item for a new gazebo?
Uh, sixty three hundred.
And are we getting a fence behind that?
Yeah, I'm working on trying to get that out of this budget.
Okay, so we have the fence.
And the two additional gazebos or columbariums are coming out of this budget.
When do you expect the other columbariums to come in?
It's probably still ways out.
Okay, so we have the fence. And you have a sidewalk also?
The sidewalk is budget, is a request for this budget, the FY twenty five. So out of that hundred fifty thousand dollars, we're looking to replace gazebo and put a sidewalk and pavers in around the, the columbariums.
Where are you putting the pavers?
It'll be a sidewalk or a paver walkway around the columbarium. So you see how it's grass right now around those? We're looking to make that a hard structure.
And so you said, are you putting a wall around that for, to make it more of a garden?
No, not a wall.
What are you putting around it?
The, a fence along the backside there to protect from the, the hill. But no, then a paper area and some benches and things like that.
Are you putting benches?
We'll put some sort of benches or, uh, something inside a gazebo and also outside.
Is there a design anywhere?
I can send you the, I just have like a sketch that kinda shows what that area looks like. It's not gonna show you very much detail. It'll show you kinda locations. A walkway path, where the gazebo is. And I can send, yeah, I can share that with you. Yeah.
I've actually visited that, uh, twice already. And just trying to figure out how do we make that respectful to someone who decides to, um, bury their loved one there because it just.
Yeah, and I would say that it is, it is. We can, we can make this. As nice as we want to. It is common though to have them in the grass like that.
Okay.
But doesn't mean we're stopping there. That's why we're requesting for some additional money to beautify it, put a walkway in, put some pavers, put a new gazebo. Kinda make that area a little nicer around it.
Also, some of the fences around the cemetery looks kind of beat up. Um, a lot of like green mold and. Um, I'm forgetting the street that goes around the cemetery.
Yeah, I'll speak with our staff and see.
Just.
Yeah, I'll see where they are on the.
Really ill kept and, um. We need to do that also.
Yeah, I'll get with our staff on that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go back and, cause I, I take that little street around the cemetery. And the fences there. In fact, there's some residential homes in front of it, but the fences look really bad. And it's the new section that we opened up. Yeah, that the fences don't look at all.
Okay, I'll get with our staff on that.
Okay.
I got one last thing, not in reference to cemetery. I wanted to bring up the, the Billy Dean Community Garden. Where we're budgeting, and we, you and I have spoken about this previously, the, the port-alet there. Um, I would like to see somehow in the near future, get us a formalized bathroom and, um, ADA compliance. And I know that. That's something that we can work towards, but. That area needs, uh, to be formalized in a, in a much better way.
Yeah, and I'll get with, uh, Jacob a little bit to talk with, and with the mayor to kinda talk about.
We talked about it last time, remember? There were some things that you said you were gonna work on.
The Billy Dean Garden? Yeah, that's one area that, I mean, we have some maintenance issues with the current layout, but we're gonna have to work together with the partner over there to kinda talk about a path forward.
It's our part, correct?
It's our property, yes.
Okay. Alright, understood. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, last one up for you all is our Recreation Impact Fee, uh, Budget, one oh four three six one four. Uh, our FY twenty four budget number and twenty five number there. Um. What we're looking to do, uh, out of our improvements for other buildings, uh, capital plan. Uh, as we had discussed last year, we had phase two for the soccer fields and phase two for the tennis pickleball courts. We've thrown in some money in for both of those phases. We did have some additional funding in that Rec Impact Fee, uh, Budget. Uh, we're proposing to go ahead and jump forward to phase three of the soccer fields at the Northwest Complex. And then that will leave us a little bit of miscellaneous, uh, funding, uh, down there at the bottom, uh, for other projects. But again, these are. Rec Impact Fee projects, so they need to be new build projects. Um, so that, uh. Five hundred thousand for phase two soccer and five hundred thousand for phase three, combined with what we have going right now, that'll give us one point five million dollars. The plan. Uh, is to, we currently are off to bid for the field construction company. Hopefully we'll get somebody awarded here soon. Uh, when that closes and then to start working on these projects simultaneously, uh, to add up, that would be six fields out on the north side of the complex. The tennis pickleball phase two would be an additional five tennis courts and an additional five pickleball courts.
Alright, any other questions on this one? Recreation impact fees? The, uh, just one more, I mean, there's a lot here. Um, Lust Road Warehouse, interior lighting renovations. So you're going back to facilities? Yes. That one here says fifty thousand. And a new roof on the Dortmund building. That's the one out here. Yeah.
So the Lust, Lust Road Warehouse.
Is that that big warehouse off?
Yeah, that needs to be removed. That money should be removed.
Large amount.
Right, that one should be removed.
Is that fifty or twenty?
Uh, that is.
That was, I'm saying.
Twenty, twenty thousand. It's number eleven.
So we fixing that building? We getting rid of, or what do we?
We have some plans that we've kinda worked on to maybe repair that building and renovate it. But the cost is still a little high, so we've kinda, we've got other priorities. Currently that are more pressing, so we've, we've kinda stepped back on that for this year for the request. So I apologize, that should have been taken out.
Alright, so, so you're saying that that's gonna be put off, but yet you. We have here twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, he's telling me to take it out, so we'll take it out.
If we're not gonna do anything with the building?
I think the estimated cost right now is kinda.
It was like one point two five million to put a new roof on it. So again, our priorities, we have more pressing priorities in the facility maintenance world, uh, at this time. So that line item was if we were gonna do the roof replacement. We're not, we're not proposing to do the roof replacement, so that line should have been taken out as well.
So that line will be taken out.
That twenty thousand will be taken back in.
That can offset some of the other things that you're trying to add.
Right. So I apologize about that.
And the Cowell Building is right next door?
Yes. We've done a patch on that roof, uh, but it does need a roof.
Weren't we supposed to replace the storages by Frank Carlton? Did we? The storage, uh.
The women's club storage?
Yeah.
So we are just about finishing up design of the maintenance and storage building that'll be located at the cemetery. When that's completed, the plan is to have some storage space allocated for that.
Didn't we allocate funds last year for that?
No. Oh, yeah, no. We do have funding for that project that was like two years ago. We've asked in this budget to increase that funding to cover some of the construction costs, but. Those two specific storage sheds, the stuff in that would be located at our new storage building.
Where would it be, uh, located?
The new storage and maintenance building, we're planning at the cemetery.
You're planning to put it at the cemetery?
Kinda where that McBride building is.
Oh, okay. So you'll be taking down those two storage rooms?
Those will go down. The, Public Services is working a project in that area anyways with the lift station.
Oh, they're gonna put a lift station there?
There's a lift station there that's being redone. But that's Public Services project, but. The plan would be to remove those sheds once the new storage and maintenance building is complete.
Is that going to happen with this, uh, twenty, four twenty five?
The design on that building is almost done. Uh, once we get the funding finalized, we can move forward with construction. And that will also, those old maintenance buildings next to the Frank Carlton Center.
Yes.
That will allow us to tear those down. Which are in pretty bad shape.
Um, are we still taking down the Dream Lake, uh, is that the Connolly House that was supposed to be?
Yeah, so we.
That was at, I believe it was a year or two years ago. That we had talked about. Taking that building and just demolishing it.
We're trying to get either that one or the McBride building done this year with the funds that we have in the budget. The initial quotes we got back for doing that were higher than what we have budgeted. We're looking at some new quotes now to try and at least get one of them done with the funding we have. I also asked for some additional funds in that line for twenty five to make sure those get taken care of. If we can't get one done this year.
Do we utilize that building at one, those, that old house?
There's a little bit of storage in there, I believe Public Services, but.
Okay. Any public comment on Parkson Rec?
Alvin McKemme, three six one three Golden Gem Road. Possible I need a little bit of education, because when I look at uh budgets and we look at the Parks and Recreation. And we look at what Jason Dwelly actually does. Is Jason Dwelly primarily Parks and Recreation, or is it partially a, a public utility? The reason I ask, it's Jason Dwelly consists of three ponds. It contains a one retention pond and two aquifer recharge ponds. So now we have to decide, if something major has to be done in that facility, who pays for what? The reason I ask is that, to my understanding, Jason Dwelly hasn't been used as a public utility for quite some time. In respect of it can't pump water back out to the city. So the drought that you're currently experiencing can't be solved by Jason Dwelly. Jason Dwelly can only pump water into the facility, and if it's too much water goes in, it goes into the aquifer recharge system. Now, my understanding is Jason Dwelly was never designed to be continuously used as a recharge aquifer system. Which leads us to the point, what happens in a recharge aquifer system? If we have too much water, we flood it over the edges of the liner. This is what happened at Golden Gem Road when liners had an ingress of water underneath it. We're continuously flooding water in that facility over the edges. Is that gonna be potential for public safety? Do we have to have fences around those ponds where people could go in, where it's really, really wet? I don't know, in fact, Saint John stipulate when they're building ponds, that anywhere where there's reclaimed water, there should actually be fences round about it. But yet we don't have fences round about all the facility adjacent Dwelly Road. Is there some way that we had some uh exclusion from doing that? I don't know the answers, but potentially, we really need to figure out, cause these are big cash figure items. If we have to put large amounts of fences all over the place, which part of the budget is it coming out of? As for Lust Road, Lust Road was originally part of what was called a superfund area. It was an area where there was a lot of toxic chemicals. I don't know what the situation is where your buildings that you're speaking about are. But if you dem, if you're going for demolition, do we have to be aware of any factors regarding the fact that it might have been a superfund site at one time?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane. Several comments, I know, I live within two blocks of the park, so I'm there nearly every day and Radley knows, I shoot him emails and things. Thanks for fixing the fence and the fountains. Uh, but we need, the aspect of fields, I'm glad to hear that he's talking more like six fields instead of two. Uh, when you look at the, the utilization of multipurpose fields, there's well over a thousand kids playing soccer, lacrosse and football. And we have maybe a couple hundred people playing tennis and pickleball. We need to look at where we've put those funds, maybe put more to the fields. We ought to be looking at netting on Happy Way, we got nine, ten, eleven, twelve year olds running out in the Happy Lane. We need a netting there to protect, we got fields right there, we need netting to protect and knock down probably seventy-five percent of the balls that go out in the street. Uh, on the weekends especially, signage and rangers. I think at each entrance, we ought to have a digital sign that directs people where to go. Uh, a week ago Saturday, my wife and I were almost run over by three vans flying around the amphitheater fifteen to twenty miles an hour. There were allegedly vendors at the end, but well, there should be someone at the stop sign between the ponds. I caught an officer, he did stop a number of people, people looking for fields, where the fields at. They come flying down there, there's walkers, there's kids in wheelchairs, uh adults in wheelchairs, we need to do that. Uh, on, with regard to the um uh programs you run, I'm nearly at every one of the amphitheater events. Rare occasion, I don't get there. We never know what vendors would be there, how many vendors would be there, whatever. If it was advertised in advance, I wouldn't bring a whole lot of food with me, cause I know we had vendors there. I think we need to do a better job with that. Um, Rangers, when you've got soccer, you've got lacrosse, you've got some, well, usually soccer, lacrosse are going at the same time. You've got baseball and softball, you've got tennis courts going on, and typically there's only one ranger on site riding around. And we need more than that uh to get there. Uh, when we talk about seasonal employees, it's pretty confusing. I come from a food service and from a healthcare background, we talk about full-time equivalents, FTEs. So when we look at a hundred and fifty seasonal workers, is that a hundred and fifty FTEs? Is that seventy-five FTEs? I'm used to if there's forty, forty people working twenty hours, that's twenty FTEs. I think that would be more helpful in looking at it. Then we look at the fields, two weekends ago, we had lacrosse tournament going on, the fields that have been denied to the soccer program. At ninety-eight dollars an hour, but the, the tournament was only twenty-five bucks an hour. They're back at resting now, but the, the, no complaints on that. Three full-time and two part-ten people to manage a dozen tennis courts and pickleball courts seems way overkill for me. Um, I think that's my comments, we need to do more, we do better. And my question to Radley, does this represent everything you need to effectively run the program and prove the conditions of the fields? And the programs you offer? He says it is, thank you.
Good afternoon, Rogers is back at Seven West Main Street. Um, just had some questions, cause it may have been something I missed. Um, I think he spoke on a Connolly building possibly being demoed, and I know there's another building here on South Forest. The um building just, just southeast of us. Um, that at one point in time, I think you were trying to get a new journey to go into that location. Um, is there any plans for that site? Um, cause if, if not, I saw that he had um guys talked about expanding the um, the museum and things of that nature. That could be another lo, location to probably use, maybe to redesign it. And it faces up to the uh, the trail, so it can, may bring visibility to, to the museum. Cause otherwise, if you're not paying the water bill, nobody really pays attention to that current location. So this is something that you can maybe think of looking at as an option. Um, and then the other thing that was brought up, the two hundred thousand for just the design of a pool. Um, and we clearly know that pool's gonna cost quite a bit. And then we really need to do an analysis, is that the best location for it? Because to me, if you're gonna go, you're probably gonna end up paying about a million dollars for this pool. Um, is that the best location, right? Um, if that is the case, what other entities could you use to help with the maintenance and everything else coming along with it? Um, then what else can it be used for? So we need to really, if we're gonna look at million dollar projects, we really need to put a performer together on how are we gonna manage this? Because basically at the end of the day, we're adding a lot of infrastructure that's gonna come back to the tax base, of course, to pay for. But at some point in time, we have to do a business analysis of how's it gonna impact? Because really, it's a, it's a, it's an amenity to the city, but we still need to look at a balance. Um, I know Lake Brantley, they have a aquatic center, and I know I've took my kids to do certain things there. So we may delete, may need to look at, if we're gonna add these things on it, because all of these items come with maintenance. And it's gotta be ran, it's gotta be personnel, so we need to be more effective on how we do it, as opposed to react, retroactive, kind of just piece things together. Um, there was a mention about the, those boxes, I guess, for the cemetery. Well, my question is just, listen to, I, I didn't know what this, that was. But you guys have not had anyone that went into those boxes as of yet, if I understand this correctly?
Yeah, well, we don't have, we haven't got, do we have the contract yet?
We're waiting on the, on the vendor for.
Right, yes.
So what would a box like that cost? I'm just, I'm just kinda wondering, like, what's the cost benefit to that? I know it's gonna be a benefit to you, but is it breaking even? Okay. Gotcha. But that's just some things I just kinda saw looking up, you know, what's been presented here today. Um, just hopefully think about the long term of how this is gonna affect us five or ten years from now, so, thank you.
Alright, next up, finance.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, I'll try to make this as brief as possible. Finance Department Budget. The first page is a department overview. Quick snapshot of the org chart, we have twenty-two current positions, and I'm requesting two additional positions. Um, a new customer service specialist and a purchasing coordinator. Um, finance and accounting and financial reporting, we have four staff there. Purchasing contracts and procurement, three staff with the one new request for that purchasing coordinator. Payroll and accounts payable, four staff, and I do use temporary health um for the scanning. When you ask for all of those check copies and everything like that, we have to scan those documents. Utility billing, it's actually seven staff and one new request, excuse my typo. And budget and financial planning and grants administration is three staff there. In regards to the over, the um individual budgets for um eleven twenty, which consists of finance and accounting. Um, the majority, of course, is always salaries and wages, and then when we have some um capital, new capital items. Um, that's taken up a large percentage of about two point five, and I'll give you some details on that. That is for a new system to replace our admin systems and our IMS system that they use for um inventory management and maintenance. Utility billing, um salary and wage, this is about six hundred and sixty-four. Um, professional and contractual services, we do have to, is for out, you know, billing. Um, sending out the F bills, um contract fees that we have, and credit card fees, it's the large majority there. We do have capital of about six hundred thousand. We plan to replace some of the base stations at some of the um towers that we have that reads the meters, so, over the next year. Again, uh, some details pertaining to eleven twenty, that purchasing coordinator position, again. Um, as the demands grow, as we continue to grow, we have more procurements, as the funding continues to grow, we have to go out and do those solicitations. So we're asking for an additional position there. And another increase in our funding requests related to eleven twenty is professional services. About eighty K for an investment advisor and some accounting services. Um, sixty-four hundred for equipment and machinery, again, that's, this cost is related to the new software um system. I came to you, and I think, you know, with a budget amendment of about seventy thousand and bringing a consultant to take a look at our current systems, meet with all the. The various departments due to system requirements, that is still underway. So this is just an estimate around the midpoint of that, and I did take in probably about sixty percent of that implementation cost. So for the equipment itself, it's about five hundred and fifty-seven K for the purchase of the equipment for both systems, the ERP system and the EAM system. And it includes implementation. And for the software associated with that and implementation, that comes to about one point nine. Looking at a total of about two point five for the total system. Any questions before I go to thirty-one sixty-one?
Any questions?
Uh, my, my question, the new system you're talking about implementing, is this gonna be able to be used across the city with other departments as well?
That's the goal.
It's gonna be able to merge?
That is the goal, and I'm gonna give you some more details pertaining to that and under the new initiatives. The goal is to have a fully functional integrated system. Yes, sir, okay. So going into thirty-one sixty-one, um, under this one, this is utility billing. I'm asking for another customer service specialist under that division. Again, our customer count continues to increase, we're growing, as you know. So we do need additional staff to adequately support that um operation.
How many do we have currently right now?
Seven.
We have seven customer service specialists.
Well, we have seven under utility billing. We have a manager, we have one customer service specialist, and some customer service um representatives. We have four, and one meter reader. I'm adding one more customer service specialist, is what I'm asking for.
Is that gonna be the front desk?
They all sit out in the front, yeah.
All sit out in the front?
Except for the manager. He'll be going into um his newly renovated office.
With the new developments that we have, how much have we increased our utility customers?
I know we're currently about thirty thousand customers, so you've had significant growth. That's where you're gonna see that continue throughout all of these budgets. That's why you have increases in revenue for the various revenue sources associated with it.
What are the hours of service?
Eight to five.
Have, because um there are days where I see that line.
Yeah.
Of customers coming to pay.
Eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Have you ever considered to have one workday where we can have it till maybe seven? That would allow anyone that um is working, uh, you know, and wants to pay their bill? Because from eight to five, you're really in the day of most people who are at work.
Yeah, and there's various options for making payment as well, um, for online payment, um, you know, various credit card payments. So everyone doesn't come in to make a payment. And we have some automatic withdrawals from customers' accounts, so there's different options for making payments.
We do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, the other question, because you know, I've gone in there. Where do you plan to put this extra personnel?
In, in the front, is a, is a office, yes ma'am. And we're gonna, we're gonna take that area where they got two people sitting, we can make that three.
And your purchasing agent or?
Oh, that, yeah. That, yeah.
Your purchasing coordinator?
Yes, I guess we're, we'll have to sit them down there where the rest of the purchasing staff is. It depends on how we, what we end up doing with the chamber building and things like that. Um, who ends up going into that building, and what ends up happening with some of the others departments? That are in the fi, in that building over there.
Yeah, cause um, I've been in your office.
I know, you, you, it's very crowded, we're very limited on space. We've kinda outgrown it, so we just have to, I'll work with Radley, and we'll see in the mayor and Jacob when they make up their mind about how they wanna use the chamber building.
Yeah. I believe that um if you bring in extra personnel, that you, you have run out of space.
Yeah.
Because some of those offices, I've seen three.
Well, yeah, it's three different spaces, but there's like three people behind one door, yeah. But they have their own different workstations, yeah. It's, we had to take the conference room and make it into a workspace, so, yes. So the next step is to see again how they're gonna use the chamber building.
So on this, on this budget, you want to hire personnel?
Yes.
But we don't have.
Well, I'm hoping by October, you know, cause it won't be, and when we get someone hired, say October, November, I guess a decision will be made by then. So we do have a few months.
Okay. It, then we have to kinda push to have the chamber building um kinda renovated for that extra space. Okay.
Okay. So, in addition to that, like I said, two hundred and eighteen K for contractual obligations as a result of the water loss study. Uh, findings in prior years and an increase in our credit card fees. Um, freight and postage increase about eighty-three K, again, that's all the mailings that we have for the utility bills. Printing sixty-four K, we have to print those bills, postcards, reminder notices and uh utility billing newsletter. And for the equipment, about six hundred K uh for purchasing replacement of various base station equipment for the city's meter reading system throughout the service area. Just to give you some highlights on the new initiatives and programs for that new ERP and EAM system. Again, uh, we want a fully functional system, you know, intuitive and easy to use ERP system and EAM system. The current system that we use, um, the processes and silo systems at the city, they just are not adequate and have become outdated and ineffective. Some of the primary issues that are common to and exist across the systems in the fully functional areas are listed again. Before you, the silos, the manual processes inadequate, um, lack of user interface. The majority of the transactions require too many screens to be transferred. Lot of required transactional fields are not available in the system, and the users are having to develop workarounds. Um, integration lacking, current systems are not inequ, do not adequately allow for the need of business workflow. Lack of general needed functionality, um, lack of necessary reports, and going on and on and on.
I have a question for you, so the printing services for utility bills, um, is there an option, and forgive me if I can't remember, is there an option to receive it, to opt to receive electronically the bill?
Um, I think they do go out and email, yes ma'am.
Yeah, we, 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 a couple of years ago, we tried to get a, push to get them to go that route, so we could save the postage. You know, cause obviously postage keeps going up, and the, the newsletter keeps going up, so we're.
I know one of the incentives that usually, for me, with different um subscriptions and mailings, if they, if I receive a discount, like ten percent for, to receive it. That probably can be something that we can look at considering, because if they opt in, then you save like five. That probably can be something that we can look at considering, because if they opt in, then you save like five, a couple of dollars, and I just do it because I save a couple of dollars. So, that could be something we can look at doing in the future.
Thank you. Okay. And the critical goal of the new system, eliminate the standalone business processes, duplication of effort. Making sure we're compliant and applicable to legal standards. Ensure security of confidential information, a more flexible system. Improve the workflow, increase information analysis capabilities. Increase public and contractor access to the city of Apocca departments to better serve the needs of the public. Centralized approach, open architecture, centralized control, and complete integration between the systems and the processes. So, that is it for finance. Any additional questions?
I have to.
Okay.
With this new software, speed up the process of processing POs?
With speed of the process to process the POs? It should speed up the process to process the POs, but I, the issue is before you even get to the point of a PO. Is making sure that you adhere to the procurement policy prior to submitting a requisition. That is really where the slowness comes, because we do have a policy that we must adhere to.
So, it's additional training that needs to be done within the departments in order that, that procedure is done correctly?
And we have, and we will continue to do that.
All right. And in reference to when customers' meters are replaced. There's been some chatter that once the meter's replaced, supposedly that they've been undercharged 'cause the meter wasn't working properly, and now they're receiving...
They receive estimated bills when the meter is not reading properly. And once that meter is completely repaired and the system is reading it. Because they can replace a meter and not place, replace the, what is it called? Or senses, the little antenna. Okay? And if the antenna's not there, it's still not reading the meter. Okay? Or if it's not connected properly, it's still not reading it. So, until that time, I mean, you're getting an estimated bill. And then once the reader starts reading again, we go back and we do the backbuilding, and we're only building for what you actually consume. But it's a true hunt. So, we try to make, like, you know, when it becomes so, such of a burden, a one-time adjustment. You know, to kind of lessen that burden at that time.
So, so you do make an adjustment?
Yes.
Okay.
Does the customer know that their meter is, is not functioning?
Yes, it's, it's indicated. It's on their, it's on their bill that is estimated.
The bill says it's estimated?
Yes, ma'am.
But does anywhere in the bill tell them that their meter is not reading?
I don't think there's any additional notification other than the fact that it's estimated.
So, there's nothing on the, on the bill that they get, that they receive to tell them? You're saying that the bill will say this is estimated? So, if someone gets the bill and doesn't understand what estimated is?
They do.
Is there anything there that tells them that it's estimated because their meter is not properly reading their?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. We submit work orders into, for public service to go out and work on the meters. But that, yeah. That's a lot of detail.
So, what's the timeframe from when they start getting an estimated bill to actually having their meter repaired? And then getting the actual usage that they have? What's, what's it taking in between? Is it a month, two months, three months?
It could be longer than that. At one point, public service indicated that they could not get the equipment or the meters to do the replacements and, and, and fix those meters. I think we now do have the supplies. So, they're going out there trying to fix as many, as many meters as possible. So...
Do we know how many bills we're sending out right now that are estimated?
Probably somewhere between two to three thousand out of the thirty thousand.
How many?
Two to three thousand out of the thirty thousand. This is a guess, but two, three thousand, I would say, is estimated billing.
So, an estimated bill is, I don't know, it's at the lowest billing?
It takes, it depends. If the system would take like the previous, that previous, the last time the bill was read, like say if it was October. It would go back to the previous October, twelve months back, and use that as a basis to do the estimate. This was something automatically set up within the system.
I had a resident actually reach out to me with this specific issue that, I was about a year later, they got a twenty-seven hundred dollar water bill. 'Cause it was finally built back in, so they're like, that's, can't do that. So, so, it, it's problematic. However, we can fix that. I mean, although it does say not everyone's reading it. So, that was a big shock to them, a shock to any family for sure. So, it's concerning.
Yeah. I think this is, again, this is not a new issue. Okay, this has been going on for several years. And again, it's a new system that was implemented some years ago, and that's why we're trying to upgrade some of the equipment. That's why they're trying to replace some of the meters and the antennas as well. So, it's a massive undertaking.
So, do we have a maintenance program as we replace these new meters?
That's under, yes, that's under utilities, public services.
And that's under public services?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we have someone that is now?
I think it has been, yeah, about. Yeah, four that do the meters over there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, anybody from the public we should speak on?
Rogers, back at Seven West Main Street. I know she mentioned a lot of things about, I guess, the network update. I was, I guess my question is, I know particularly with the building department, are you guys gonna be able to go to where you can check if your permit has been approved or denied online? Because I know that was one of the things I ran into, is you have to physically call or email to see if you passed your failure inspection, it's kind of annoying.
That may be a feature under the new open gun system, but building, he's not here, John Hanson is not here.
Yeah, I think that's, I think it's in, yeah, John Hanson would be the one to answer that for you.
Okay, and then I have some questions that I, I see this stuff on my bill, so I just figured this is probably the best time to act. Particularly, let's start with, let's say Duke Energy, right? We get a municipal franchise fee and then also municipal utility tax, like, where'd, where's that money go?
It's part of our general revenue.
So, that's the general fund type argument for you? And that's the same for the, the city water, um, city tax?
No.
No?
Wait, wait a minute, city tax?
Yeah, for the water bill.
Any taxes or fees? Probably it's utility if it's related to backdoor water, yeah.
Okay. So, that, but basically, all that money just goes to the general fund?
Correct.
At the end of that. And then just one suggestion, my thought. I know you guys always get people coming here asking for money from different organizations. I know you guys had the Main Street earlier. You ever thought about maybe formalizing that process to where you can actually, somebody know, we, the city has money available for this possibly? And that way, you kind of get away from people just rolling in here, asking for money, and then you gotta make a decision. Where I think if you kind of formalize it to where, hey, this is what we're allocating, when it's gone, it's gone, start again next year. That's just kind of observation that I've saw, because there again, I really don't know much about the Main Street program. But I know there was discussion about CRA. So, my question is, the Main Street, it seems like it's been more people from the fifth, I guess, Fifth, Fifth Street?
The street.
So, you know, I don't know if that's Main Street, right? So, if you're gonna say Main Street, I think that's all encompassing of a whole area. So, I think we need, if we're gonna go that route, we need to be encompassing all the businesses in the city of Apocca. To be, you know, 'cause I would imagine this is more marketing, I guess, for things they may wanna do, I'm not sure. But I think, you know, every business wanna get marketed. Every business is not gonna get traffic, because we're less retail sites, right? What I do, I don't want nobody coming off to my side. But there is business that need foot traffic, I understand that. But we still have to be fair in how you approach that. So, I don't, I hopefully, and I don't wanna hate on it, but I wanna be honest. I don't want the funds just be for somebody visiting the market. Because I think at that point, it's a, it's a disadvantage to other people that's been here for years. That's been paying taxes, whether it's CRA, whatever the case may be. I think if we're gonna look at that stuff, be specific on how you approach it. Fifty grand, I think that's a high number, but there again, I don't know what they're proposing to do. But I think there should be a component to help businesses market. If there's gonna be a component to say, okay, if you're looking to bring infrastructure, I mean, economic development to the area, then it makes sense. But we have to also kind of evaluate how it's been done. And not just single out this one little section of Apocca. So, I may get backflanked, but I really don't care. But I just think you gotta be fair across the board, because there's been a lot of people, businesses here a long time. But there again, I understand that they're trying to bolster up the area, but just be fair about the process. Thanks.
Okay, Rod Olson.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Earlengills Lane. Just one comment with the aspect now with this ERP and EAM. Is this a new accounting system then? Just like last year, we had trouble with the budget process because we were in the midst of change, is this another change?
That's a budget system, but we are also gonna look at that as well to see whatever is out there that can help us.
Okay, thank you. And then with regard to the meter, I came from a community in North Carolina that when they could not get the reading at the office, on a quarterly basis, they sent someone out to hand-read it. That would reduce the possibility of the twenty-six hundred dollar invoice that Commissioner Nesta had pointed out. And then, Ms. Sherman, same question for you, as I've asked everyone else. Does this represent everything you need in staffing, materials, and so forth in order to do your job for the current population as well as our growth?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any final comments, any commissioners, questions?
I'm gonna look this over again, but I'll send emails if I have a question. Because there were some things here that we have allocated funds for, but we're not using, we're kind of carrying over. And maybe we can use those funds somewhere else where it's needed. But I'm gonna have to...
Let me know what you see, and, and we can talk about it. Okay. Okay, Commissioner Anderson?
And to Mr. Becker's point in regards to some type of funding that we set aside, could be per year, maybe fifty thousand dollars is set aside a year, a hundred thousand dollars set aside a year, where nonprofits, churches, different groups can apply for different initiatives. So, 'cause there, I mean, 'cause we get times, calls all the time. I'm not sure if there's something in the...
Well, we, we, up until two years ago, the commissioners all got three thousand, and I know Commissioner Smith would say, hey...
That is our personal discretion. I think it's more so on a larger scale where people wanna do like initiatives, like, you know, youth, youth. I know there's things for youth, but example, some type of like workshops or something, you know, against gun violence or something, where they can apply for, you know, certain grants initiatives. Where there's a process where they can go through, so they can apply for, you know, different things. So, I, I think, 'cause there's different cities and areas have, have things like that, where they can apply for, you know, there's a hundred thousand dollars where there is, for example, what Main Street is trying to do. Where they can apply for funding for some type of initiative that they have.
And I think Commissioner Valesko has mentioned that she wants some type of resolution for those discretionary funds. Not only just for the commissioners, but it can include that type of situation.
Because what I'm seeing here is that the city, as a whole, which represents us, is already investing in some of these organizations. But the organizations are also coming to us here and asking each of us to donate. And I was unaware, like, we had four thousand dollars for, for one organization, and then that organization is actually sending us vouchers or sponsorships, asking for five hundred dollars from each of us. So, that's an additional investment in that 501(c)(3). So, we have the same organizations that we, as a collective, are already investing in them. And then they're coming individually to us and asking for more. We have other 501(c)(3)'s.
That could benefit, and they can apply for those same funding, and it should go to different funding sources in addition to...
I, I know what you're asking for. You're kind of asking for a, a, a separate, but we're not that big yet.
Well, I'm not asking for a lot, but...
We're not that big yet, 'cause I know that Orlando has it, Orange County has it. But we're not that big to kind of put on the side, you know, fifty or a hundred thousand dollars.
It could be ten thousand dollars, but people are coming here asking for the money.
We each have that, that opportunity to, in, you know, to donate. To sponsor a, a, a 501(c)(3). And I think between all of us, 'cause it's ten thousand each of us, so that's forty thousand. And the mayor has fifteen thousand, which I just saw today. So, that's almost, what, fifty-five thousand? So, that's, that's a pot. That's fifty-five thousand. We have that already. So, but we have it, that it's broken up individually. You have ten thousand, I have ten thousand. Commissioner Smith has ten thousand, McNesta has ten thousand, and the mayor has fifteen thousand.
But I think to the resident's concern is that if someone, to streamline the process of one company coming in asking for a pot of money, we already kind of have it set aside where anybody can actually, you know, there's a process where they actually have to bid on that money or put in an application for that money, opposed to we, you know, we line item something for that one particular organization.
And as I understood, she's talking something similar to this Main Street station, I guess, situation.
So, just something for thought, I think it's just more so just kind of, not that it's gonna happen today, but...
Correct.
We are growing, and people...
Consider it in the resolution in addition to the discretionary funds by the commissioners.
Right now, there is a discretionary fund, and there is an opportunity for 501(c)(3)'s organizations to come to us. But what I'm trying to kind of streamline is if we are already, as a city, investing separate from what we have into this organization, then I don't understand why they're coming to each of us asking for an additional five hundred dollars, 'cause that seems to be what most of them do ask for, five hundred dollars.
And again, it's, it's your discretion. If you are aware that they, we've already contributed as a whole, you have that choice. Not to contribute from your ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Anybody? Commissioner Smith?
Well, in some instances, the city may be contributing, and not always is it in money, but it may be in in-kind services. And so, that may not be adequate to fund whatever project they may have. So, therefore, they may need actually to come to the city commissioners and ask for some, some actual funding. As opposed to just in-kind services that we provide as, as a city. But other than that, I think at some point, as we continue to grow, that, that maybe we can have a grant process where large organizations or companies that need some type of financial assistance that we can't do out of a discretionary budget, that then they could come to that pot of money. And, and quite naturally, fifty thousand dollars wouldn't be enough. We have one individual asking fifty thousand, so we're talking about maybe a hundred thousand dollars that we probably have to set aside. But as we grow and get to that point, that may be something that we can look at, that we can be able to assist our businesses so they can survive.
Okay. Mr. Nesta?
Yeah, and I appreciate all staff being here late, appreciate all your hard work on this. It's definitely not easy, so I just wanna thank you all for that. Kind of flipping to the end of this story, though. Eight point one million from reserves to balance this budget. That's really concerning. And to, to our city minister, Mr. Smith's comments, it's not nearly what we all need anyways. So, that's even more concerning. So, we're gonna have some really hard conversations this week, 'cause there, there's a lot that's needed and a lot of money that each department needs in addition to, to what they're requesting. So, other than that, that's it. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thanks, everybody, for coming. See you tomorrow. Five forty-five, we've got planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning.
Yeah, five forty-five, yes. Five forty-five.